If everyone, so this is again, I better back up the bow a minute. So we have a meeting here this evening scheduled for six. We're smidgen over Monday, April 26, 2021 to get things underway. If everyone would, I have, I have, I have my flag right behind me. You could all join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful, and thank you. And Ms. Abby, would you have a roll call for us, please?
So just a little bit of the housekeeping reminders. All planning commission members, as you sign in, need to state your name and where you are calling from. It does not have to be Cadillac. Philkins.
Here, city of Cadillac.
Greg. Is absent. Bunce is also absent. Bosher.
I caught none of that, Greg.
We'll come back to you, see if you can get your audio to work.
Let's try that. Oh, there, there you go.
Hi. Present, city Cadillac.
Thank you. Baumann.
Here, I am somewhere near Kalamazoo. So township or the city, one of the two.
Thank you. Bent.
Here, city of Holland.
Anne Putman.
Here, and city of Cadillac.
And for everybody else, if you're not speaking, if you would please just keep yourself muted to keep from background noise bouncing around. We'd appreciate it.
Got it. At this, at this time, I need approval of, again, the agenda here for April 26, 2021.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor seconded by Mr. Baumann. Roll, please.
Okay. Bosher.
Yes.
Bent.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Anne Putman.
Yes. Thank you. At this stage, on our agenda, we have public comments. If there are public out there this evening, if you, if this pertains to a question that we are going to be discussing this evening, please wait. If you have any comments on anything else, please feel free to ask at this time.
Hearing nothing. I will move on here to, I need an approval of the March 22, 2021 meeting minutes.
I'll zoom. For a second.
Kevin and Mr. Baumann. Mr. Bent, Mr. Baumann. Abby, please.
Baumann.
Yes.
Bent.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
And Bosher.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Public hearings, we don't exactly have tonight, but we do have new business. Our first new business is a site plan review for an underground pool at 710 East Division Street. Having read that, I will now let Mr. Wallace fill us in.
Yes, this is a site plan that was submitted for a pool, and the city zoning ordinance requires that it undergo a planning commission review and approval. It seems like a pretty straightforward application. It's from Eric Wotilla at 710 East Division Street. In your packets, you should have the staff report from Mike Coy. He included the planning commission application, a GIS aerial photo of the site, and a site plan showing the pool dimensions. The aerial probably isn't terribly accurate because the number of trees, I guess, were taken out since the time that the aerial photos were taken. The area is zoned. R3, one family district, as are the adjoining properties. And so that's, that's the nature of the area. And the staff report didn't show all the setbacks and fencing requirements and so forth. Mike Coy has reviewed the plan and has found that the the fencing and all the other setback requirements have been met for the application. I will show my, share my screen just so you can see the site plan for the pool in case anyone has any questions. And you can see that the pool is located directly behind the home. All the different dimensions are included on the site plan, which identifies that they do meet the requirements. I wasn't here when the site plan first came in. Eric, I assume that the square behind the house that also goes around the pool is the proposed fencing. Is that correct?
Yes, so my discussion with Mike.
Right here.
Yep, yep, so that's, that's the concrete pad around the pool. Mike Coy said he was a little unclear. We are putting in automatic electronic pool cover, safety cover on the pool. And it was a little unclear on whether we required a fence or not with that cover. But Mike did say the plan met the requirements. So that's, that's where he left it with me. But again, I know in most municipalities in Michigan, the automatic pool cover covers the fencing requirements.
So basically, I think it's a pretty straightforward plan. So with Mike's conclusion was that, well, he said it's up to the commission to approve it, but his comments were that all the conditions were met. And he also mailed courtesy notice to adjoining property owners. I don't know if any of those property owners are in attendance at this meeting. If they are, I imagine we could see if there's any input from the adjoining property owners. Are there any adjoining property owners to this pool application? I'm not seeing anyone. I guess not. So I guess, you know, if there's not further discussion, I guess the motion would be to approve the in-ground pool as applied for by Eric Wotilla at 710 East Division as presented.
I would make that motion. I think it's a wonderful update to that property.
Second.
Perfect. Roll, please, Abby.
Second was Baumann.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Thank you. Putman.
Yes.
Bent.
Yes.
Bosher.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
And Baumann.
Yes.
I apologize, my dog is barking in the background.
Couldn't hear him.
No. And Eric will invite us when it's done.
Yep.
Deal. Thank you all very much, by the way.
Thanks, Eric. Okay. Next under new business this evening, we have WL Green Ventures requesting a special land use permit to operate a medical marijuana retail establishment on property in the city located at 919/929 North Mitchell. Having done that, Mr. Wallace is going to take control again.
Yes, I will give a presentation on the application. And if the applicant feels I've left anything out, they can follow up with input that they think I may have missed. But I've tried to cover most of the territory for the application. And we probably got it a little mixed up on the agenda. This is a special land use permit, so it will actually be a public hearing. So after my presentation, John, you'll have to
Open one.
Open a public hearing and close it.
Good.
So with that, I think I'll start in. I have a PowerPoint, and I also have a staff report was, was sent to you this afternoon. I'll start with the PowerPoint to give you a sense of what the site looks like and some of the photographs of the adjoining properties, just so that you get a feel for what's happening on and around the site. And when we get into the standards, both for the general standards for a special use permit and also the special standards for a medical marijuana business, then I will get into the staff report. I didn't put those into slides because it's just page after page of text, and that would be pretty boring to see in a PowerPoint. But with that, I'll start with the PowerPoint. Are you able to see the slides?
Yes, sir.
The special use permit is for 919 and 929 North Mitchell Street. The applicant representative in this case is Driven Design Studios, which has been doing the design work on behalf of WL Green Ventures, which is the business owner. And WL Green will also be leasing that facility. There will be another owner, which is identified in the staff report. And the requested use is for a medical marijuana retail store. The marijuana retail will actually be going in the southernmost building. Both buildings are kind of twin buildings. They are 3,000 square feet each. The building at 929 North Mitchell, which is, which is also 3,000 square feet, will not contain any marijuana operations, but will be continued to lease in much the same manner as it has been in the past. I believe there's some insurance offices and other office uses in that facility. This shows you the aerial of the site. As you can see, the site is fully developed, either in parking lot or building sidewalks and a little bit of landscaping at the front of the facility. Kind of interesting, at one point, I don't know if they had more property to the rear, but you can see kind of the perpendicular parking off, coming off the back of the building. With the amount of space that's there now, that is just not a conceivable plan to do going forward. So just so that you're aware of that. The following two pictures just give you an idea of the design for the building. Very little material. Changing materials in the facade. Pretty, pretty simple look to the facilities. Just a little bit of landscaping to break things up. There you can see the State Farm Office. That's the building that would not be in the marijuana operation. The lots, well, both buildings at 919 and 929 are zoned in the B3 zoning district. The B3 zoning district does allow for medical marijuana shops, subject to a special use permit. In this case, the one building will have the medical marijuana. The other building will not. But it is permissible through the city zoning ordinance. And we'll probably come back to the site plan later, but just in passing now, just to give you a general overview of what's being planned. Essentially, the front of parking in the facility will be much like it is today. You'll have perpendicular parking to the building. It's a double, a double bay in front. And the, you can get 25 spaces in the front and another five spaces to the rear. So they would be able to generate 30 parking spaces, which is five parking spaces per thousand square feet to service those buildings. The dumpster for the facility, you can see located down in the southwest corner. And we'll probably get into that a little bit later. The south property line and the west property line have six-foot privacy fences. The property line to the south, in addition to the privacy fence, will also have some landscaping attached with that privacy fence, which I can show you in the, in the next photograph or sketch. This was the early depiction of the facility as we were going through the selection process. It's been fine-tuned a little bit, but it gives a pretty good overview of what the facility would look like from Mitchell Street. They are going to have a 30-inch wall right off the sidewalk. It'll have a black metal cap. You can see that there's some signage on the south end of that retaining wall. They will be doing some articulation through some special fencing or metalwork to, to break up the front facade, which is one of the requirements of our marijuana ordinance. And they will be putting type of vines or planting material on the privacy fence to the south. And they'll also be using that on the fencing material that will be going in the front facade. These are black and white versions, but you can see, maybe I can enlarge this. I'll probably have to do it on the other set of plans. But there's kind of a, I'll let the applicant describe it. It's more like a metal cutout ornament fencing type thing that will break up the front of the building. And then you can also see the landscaping and also the signage. When I get to the actual plan set, it might show it just a little bit better. The facades that aren't going to be on the Mitchell Street side will not have as much ornamentation and will just be the basic siding along with the access doors. With respect to what is around the building, the site is in the North Mitchell Street corridor. It is B3. B3 is our general business district. There's a lot of heavier commercial up in that area, including a lot of automotive. In this case, immediate adjacencies include offices, trailer renting business, single-family homes. And then to the rear of the site, there's actually a 100-foot wide public swath of land, which I think is primarily used for drainage. I believe that is city-owned. This is the property to the east, which is in front, across the street, in front of the building. It's another small office center. And you can see the first home and a small string of single-family homes that are located to the south of that office building. This view is the 100-foot wide swath of land has fencing up between the property lines, which again is used for drainage purposes. I think there's actually maybe a formal drainage basin just to the south of the site. Immediately to the south, again, just a lot of hard surface asphalt parking for the trailer business. Very small strip of grass strip in front offers the only real relief of being fully developed to the south. To the north, there's a vacant office building. A little bit, the look is a little softened, a little bit more landscaping, lawn, some fencing. Building's fairly attractive. Might be one of the nicer developments immediately around the proposed site. With that, I will probably switch to talking a little bit about the standards that have to be met. So if you're trying to follow along, probably if you go to the staff report, that would be easy to follow, follow along there. Are you able to see the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. I covered some of this, so I'll go through it rather quickly, some of the general stuff. The site is actually 0.66 acres. The current use of the property, we've talked about having primarily office buildings. The property is currently owned by Windover LLC. The new owner would be LAC Developments LLC. And WL Green Ventures would be, LLC would be the tenant in the facility. And they identify representative for WL Green as Neemir Hadad. With respect to the site plan review, it's handled a little bit different. This isn't a new construction project, but despite it not being a new construction project in this particular case, the setbacks are all met. If perhaps they wouldn't, we might be able to overlook that back because of it being an existing development. But fortunately, in this case, the setbacks are all met. The parking, we talked a little bit about the parking. The parking spaces are slightly smaller than what we require in our ordinance in terms of depth. I think they're about 18 feet length. The width of the parking spaces meet our zoning ordinance. They are nine feet wide. The handicap accessibility has been reviewed by our engineer and found acceptable. So with respect to the parking, I think it's a good place. The earlier version of the site plan, before we went through administrative site plan review, had the parking to the rear of the building, located on the west side of the aisle instead of the east. I felt it was better to move it back to the east because of the limited space to travel around the back of the building. And it would make it easier for the one-way traffic movement to circulate behind the building. If there would be more room if the cars were parked on the closer, you know, closest to the building on that rear aisle. So that, that's what was done. And so with 25 in the front and five in the rear, they were able to get to that 30-space count, which if both buildings were in office today, that would meet the ordinance requirement. And because we are, we don't really have a standard per se for medical marijuana retail. If you put them under the general retail, our ordinance is a pretty tough standard. It would require five additional parking spaces. In this case, I don't think we need to deal with that because we're dealing under a existing business. Besides, I don't think, based on my research, if we were to develop a retail standard for medical marijuana, it would be lower than the standard that we currently have for general retail. In fact, we may even be changing that standard when we get into our new zoning ordinance. Sidewalks, there would be no change to the sidewalk on Mitchell. It would retain, be retained as is. There will be a sidewalk immediately in front of the building, which would be on the east side of the building along the parking area. Be lighting. If you look into the elevation views on all the buildings, you can see the various lighting denotations. I've asked that they submit a photometric plan, which would give us an idea of the strength of the lighting on that site that could be reviewed by our city engineer. And they've agreed to do that. And so that would become part of the approval. The dumpster on the site is located in the southwest corner. I might want to zoom in that a little bit closer and a little bit just to kind of show you what the clearance is. It gets a little tight as you try to navigate around that, that corner of the building to exit out the front of the building. So we'll probably want to take a little bit closer look at that. The landscaping. The landscaping is interspersed wherever there is potential for that. The biggest location is at the front, front property line, right behind the 30-inch wall. There will be two heights of grasses alternating along that front, which will kind of soften the look of the site at that location. They've tried to also incorporate some landscaping along the fencing and the front side of the building. I may have them comment a little bit on, on the nature of that landscaping after my presentation. It's called Boston Ivy that they're, that they'll be using on that. With the special use standards. With the special use standards, uh, you're probably all really familiar uh, with this. Um, we have the standards that apply to every special land use regardless of what it is. And that's the first uh, part of this next part of the staff report. And then the second one relates directly to all the standards that were contained in the marijuana ordinance itself. Uh, basically, I I don't know if I want to read through every one of these. It takes quite a bit of time, but um, basically it asks a lot of different questions about whether the proposed site is uh, compatible uh, with the surrounding development, whether it'll put an increased burden on the utilities. Uh, a number of different questions just to determine, uh, would this be uh, acceptable at this location? Would it interfere with enjoyment of adjoining properties? A lot of questions like that. Basically, if you've read through my staff report, you'll see that I've concluded that uh, the standards have been met for the general uh, standards that were, are within our ordinance. We don't have any utility issues at that location. And uh, so I really don't see any problems from those general standards. But then we'll get into the marijuana standards. Again, I haven't found any real reason to be concerned about that. Again, there are probably more items under the specific standards than there are the general standards. Um, a lot of it relates back to uh, state law, uh, as well as local law. And of course, with the state, uh, they're going to be required through their licensing to uh, comply with state laws. So to the degree that uh, our standards contain things that are covered in state law, they're automatically being covered uh, because of their need to comply with that state law. But if you read through their submittal materials, you'll see that they've gone to great lengths to uh, have equipment, uh, both for security, uh, cameras, uh, separate storage areas, lockable waste containers. Uh, they've gone, uh, they have uh, HVAC equipment that's designed to deal with any potential odor problems, uh, things of that nature. Uh, the signage will comply with uh, the city zoning ordinance. Uh, there's a lot of standards in here about all the different HVAC equipment, but uh, they've done a a pretty thorough job of getting into that and and telling us what they're going to use as part of uh, part of that system. And then some rather simpler things like, you know, keeping the doors and windows closed except for normal ingress and egress uh, on the property. Uh, early in the process, when we were uh, even deciding who received the license, we reviewed all the distance requirements uh, that we had in our ordinance. Distances they had to be from single family homes, from schools uh, and other public facilities, and they meet all the uh, spatial requirements uh, for this particular business. Uh, some of the standards that are in the ordinance uh, would not be applicable uh, to this business just because of the nature of what they are proposing. And then there's some basic operational items, hours uh, that they're not allowed to operate. And uh, that would be a condition of approval for the special land use that um, the operational uh, things that they cannot do because of our ordinance that uh, uh, they would be agreeing to essentially uh, as a condition of accepting this special land use for that. There would be no consumption uh, of product on onsite, nor would there be consumption of cigarettes or alcohol on the site. And uh, they have a very uh, secure process to monitor uh, all the re- uh, retail product and waste product. Uh, they have very intense coating systems where they can tell where the marijuana is, uh, at all times, what's been sold. Uh, if they're disposing of it, how to account for it. And they seem to have done a really good job of uh, setting up a system where they can account for all the product that uh, comes in or goes out of the building. Uh, the design requirements, they uh, were not in as good a position as some that might be building new uh, to, to address this as fully as possible. I think they've made a good faith effort in the proposals that they've made to, to vary the uh, facade and not have it be a, a long uh, blank wall uh, in terms of looking at the building. Perhaps they may want to uh, comment on that a little bit when I, when I get done.
Hey Derek, you still here? Okay, I should be done with this about ten or fifteen minutes, but then they're gonna be gone. Can you get the number of parts that, that were uh, checked? How many are bad, how many are good, and see if she can tell you left or right sourced one, inboard or outboard?
Devin, you might want to.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Either John, um, I'm gonna jump on my phone. I have an appointment at seven o'clock. I have to leave for, and I know you probably need a vote from me.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Bye.
I lose you, I'll jump back on.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Greg.
Are you able to see the site plan again?
Yes.
Let me uh, zoom in on that. The concern I had was back in this corner and this last space would not be here. So essentially, the distance to come through there, uh, they're showing a uh, a dimension of twenty-two feet. And they're showing a dimension of nineteen feet in in this direction. Um, so I think that would be doable. It will be tight, but I think it will be doable. Uh, with respect to some other detail, um, recent addition and working through the site plan details, they will be adding a bike rack uh, near the front door. As you all know, we, we took up uh, the need to encourage multimodal uh, opportunities in our site plans, which uh, they are agreeing to do. And of course, they would be redoing uh, the pavement, the sidewalk uh, in between the, in between the buildings. And you can see here, uh, there will be mulch around the, the grasses that are in there, and the grasses will be uh, approximately uh, thirty-six inches high, and then uh, some of the plants will be forty-eight inches high. So uh, with the wall being thirty inches, uh, some of that grass material will show uh, slightly above the wall that will be at the front of the parking uh, parking lot. They are not intending to change any of the uh, parking drive, you know, the driveways into the site. If they were, that would require an M dot approval, obviously, but uh, they're uh, not proposing to to change either this driveway or the driveway uh, to the north. Those would stay the same. So essentially, uh, this would be two-way through here, and then this would be a one-way through here. And then there would be parallel parking on this side. And that, that would be so the cars making the swing around here would have more room to make the swing uh, around the building. So I think that um, basically covers what I had for my presentation. Uh, if the uh, designer, owner of W L Green would, would want to make comments uh, for a few minutes uh, to cover anything that I may have missed or to talk about. Uh, maybe some of the landscaping that you would be installing uh, along the building and how that, that metal uh, metal product would work, uh, that might be helpful to the commission.
All right, with that, uh, thank you very much, John, for your comprehensive report there. I am Cody Newman with Driven Design. We are an architecture firm out of Battle Creek, Michigan. Um, I was the architect for this project, uh, working closely with the owners. So we have them online as well, uh, to speak on behalf of some of the operations, but um, as John has mentioned, we are taking two existing buildings and rehabilitating them as part of this project. We are re-cladding the exterior uh, completely, so there'll be a new exterior siding on both buildings and new roofs on both buildings, making sure that they're stabilized as well. Um, while the focus is on the Marijuana Provisioning Center this evening, uh, we'd also like it noted that the second building is also going to be a retail tenant or business of some sort that we are working on uh, finding a tenant for. We, at this time, though, that is not in the scope of this. It's just, we're kind of whiteboxing that building, preparing it for a future use. Um, back to the Provisioning Center, uh, it is, we, we're trying to do kind of a state-of-the-art, really well-designed space. Uh, on the outside, we're trying to not be too extravagant, but clean it up quite a bit so that it kind of fits with the context of the neighborhood. Um, we're, we're adding that wall along the front and the new grasses. Um, John, if you're able to pull those plans back up, if you could go to the, the rendering sheet, the T zero zero one sheet, um, then we can just kind of give, I can give a quick overview from there.
Okay.
Um, while he's pulling that up, as mentioned, security is always a top priority for us. Um, and these, yeah, those bottom three, I'm just, if you could just zoom in a little bit on those. Great. So these give a pretty good view of what we're trying to propose for the exterior of the building here. Um, as mentioned, we have kind of a privacy fence that's around the uh, the front entranceway of the building where you can still see through it, but it creates kind of a visual barrier and some interest there. Um, while still providing some kind of security walk around that. We are adding a, the bike racks, as mentioned, new sidewalks in the middle there, uh, with some signage as well. Um, that could also be used for an additional tenant, um, in the adjacent building. Um, the grasses, we do plan to do some along the wall of the um, Provisioning Center itself. And along the, yep, along the side there. Um, basically, it's like an ivory that'll grow up the building a little bit there, just creating some natural landscaping, um, to help, help with some screening as we do that. Um, as seen here on the right-hand side, uh, we're also working on a series of different grasses along the front that would be varying heights just to create again, kind of that visual interest. And that barrier wall, um, that's being put up there, the th- at thirty inches is just basically a security between the sidewalk and kind of to create clean landscaping on the other side. Um, outside of that, we, we, a- as mentioned, the parking, we did our absolute best to maximize parking on the site. It was very tight, given the existing lot lines that we had. We did our best to maximize that. We're adding the dumpster enclosure to be able to make sure that any waste is stored in there. Uh, all marijuana products, there'll be no marijuana waste as part of this. Any of that gets uh, taken away by a secure transport company. So the minimal amount of waste we're gonna have is just like a typical office paperwork, um, nothing too exceptional there. Um, this facility is gonna have, uh, bring new jobs and new life to this building, and I'll let uh, Corbin talk a little bit on behalf of the owners on that.
Sure, uh, thank you, Cody. And uh, as I stated earlier, uh, name is Corbin Yeldu from Mid-America Real Estate from Boofa Hills, Michigan. And uh, have done extensive development work uh, for the last ten years and cannabis projects for the last three or four. And uh, my office is also in charge of leasing the new outlaw project in front of the Hobby Lobby over there in Cadillac, so very familiar with the market. And uh, a few things I would like to address is um, based on the design, if you could go back to the very first page, John? Um, so if you could zoom in on that uh, front rendering, a couple of things that we've discussed as a group with, with Cody uh, since the submittal. So on that building, you see the, the beautiful fence and the shrubs and the sign, and then you have the sign in the middle. So a couple uh, changes that may happen is the sign in the middle may end up getting split between Gatsby and the additional co-tenant to make sure that both tenants uh, have uh, proper signage. Now, if you, if you move to the second building, John, uh, where the co-tenant will be. So a- again, I've designed a lot of redevelopments and new development projects through my years and something that we're going to discuss with Cody and wanted your opinion is instead of those very tall shrubs that will be covering the building, we will probably do identical shrubs similar to building one. So that way you could see uh, the building sign. Uh, you know, pretend it says Starbucks. You'll see the Starbucks sign on the building and you'll be able to see the windows. That's uh, something that we will probably do and maybe do a fence on the other side of the building instead of there, because that's where the current State Farm sign is. Are you following me?
I am.
Okay, and then in regards to the parking lot, the parking lot and everything will get repaved, filled all the po- potholes and restripped. But uh, our original plan on our application sho- showed uh, the sign to the southern part of the property of where the, the Gatsby sign will be. But through our dialogue with Cody and doing another site visit in the la- last couple of weeks, we are uh, going to use the existing four-panel uh, monument slash pylon sign. And two of the panels will be for Gatsby Cannabis, one on the, uh, so two panels or four panels total. Uh, two panels on the south side and two panels on the, on the north side. And then the additional co-tenant will take two panels on the south side and two panels on the north side. So that existing, uh, I don't believe we have a rendering get from Cody and he could comment on it, but that existing four-panel sign that I'm mentioning, we will obviously spice it up to match, uh, you know, the material that we're putting on the building to make sure it looks fresh enough. But we feel that using those four large panels, being grandfathered in already wo- would uh, be more beneficial for giving signage to the public showing, you know, the two tenants that are in the building and as I stated to John Wallace on the preliminary meeting a, a week or two ago, we would love your input on any uh, strong regional or national tenants that you know are looking in the city of Cadillac to put in that additional three thousand square feet. Our preference is to put one additional tenant there instead of splitting that building into two different tenants. And uh, with my background of experience, signage uh, both of what I stated on the building and with this mi- uh, monument sign are very important to these national, regional tenants a- as you guys see in a lot of your new development projects. Uh, so tha- that's uh, my comments in regards to the signage and uh, the shrubs, just to give you an idea of h- how we plan on proceeding. And then additionally, uh, a- as I stated in the last meeting, you guys gave out two recreational uh, approvals and two medical approvals. And since our original uh, application took place around last spring, last summer, and our approval uh, recently got awarded over the last couple of months, the state of Michigan uh, continued to dwindle down on their m- medical license uh, approvals. So a medical license holders, meaning your medical uh, consumers are, are not renewing their licenses be- because of recreational and adult use becoming more friendly throughout the state, throughout the municipalities. So we want to continue to move forward with our project i- in good faith with you guys uh, being supportive of, of this project, both for the medical cannabis use and the additional potential national co-tenant of bringing another user to town. But you know, this store really will not be profitable unless we achieve an adult use license, especially with two competitors in town having adult use licenses. So I would like to hear everybody's opinion on what you would like to see us uh, you know, whether it's something we could vote on tonight or uh a change in your ordinance or whatever, you know, we would need to do eh to be a good business to the community to make sure that we ultimately achieve an adult-use license here, because again, this project, you know, will end up being a a seven-figure loss for the group if if we don't achieve uh, you know, that type of license.
Oh, um, that's probably beyond the scope uh, the planning commission right now. I guess that would start at the uh city council level. I mean, the city council may direct the planning commission to see how if uh going straight with recreational um had any bearing on how they wanted to zone differently uh for the different uses. Um, but the planning commission would end up probably taking your direction uh from the council, so if you really are interested in in getting something started in that direction, it would probably be uh, the starting point would be to get with the city manager to communicate your wishes to the council. Uh, and then it would flow backwards to this uh commission if the council felt that they wanted uh the c- the commission's input. Um, you know, and and which way to go uh on that uh, because I think it's more of a a political call than it is a planning call, and that's probably why I would need to start with the council.
Uh, understood. Uh, I'm on the same page with you now. Uh, just to break it down, uh, you know, as a first-grade uh language, what do you mean get with the city manager and then get with the city council? Wh- what proper steps do you need us to do, John?
Well, you would, you would need to probably write a letter and talk about the trends in the business and talk about the inherent problems and the inherent problems in the future of a medical marijuana business. Uh, being able to be sustainable over the long haul, uh, that you see that that it might not be sustainable for a very long period of time, and you would like to see if the council would consider uh changing their strategy and and how they uh deal with that. Uh, options might be to, maybe you still carry medical, but you're allowed to do recreational as well. But uh, you would have to stress to them that there's an inherent problem. It's it's not gonna take care of itself, and you might not be around as a medical supplier over the long time if if uh if something doesn't change. Uh, the, it would just be important for that to make that clear to to the council, what's really happening in the industry.
Sure. So we would, we would uh have uh our attorney for W L Green Ventures write a letter to s- the city manager, and then he would then share that with city council, and then we would uh, if all goes well, we would then have a similar type of meeting, but with city council, correct?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to put a point of order on the table. I don't think this is germane to our question and and the public hearing in front of us, so I would ask that uh, we get back to the the topic and issue at hand, and if the applicant either wants to withdraw it tonight, fine, if they want to move forward, let's get back to that, please.
I agree, Joe, John. What do you think?
No problem, guys. Go ahead and continue, John.
Uh, just a quick question. Do you uh, Corbin, foresee the state to change your ruling between medical and adult? Do you see that to get combined, washed away, changed? Is it, is it on the table for discussion?
Yeah, yes, it's uh been on the table for discussion for several months e- even prior to the uh us getting awarded the fourth license. And through our continued talks uh through attorneys and lobbyists in the industry, through our strong relationships, we are expecting the state of Michigan to eventually merge these into one license in the uh potentially as early as June, but probably really not till the fall of twenty twenty-one. And uh, you know, what those what that full merger is gonna be and how's it, how's it gonna change approvals from municipality to municipality? Uh, I I would uh, it's unclear for me to speak uh ahead of time to give false expectations. But I do believe through, you know, what we're hearing, that it will get merged, and I think that problem will resolve itself. A- and as you're seeing the state move forward in that direction, that's hence the reason why we're we're bringing it up uh ahead of time, because we always want to be transparent and and be a good business to the community uh and set expectations. But as some of your other members stated, I I think uh, you know, moving forward with planning is our main goal today, and we will continue to move forward in good faith, being just a medical license holder.
Very good. John, where are we right now then? Does Corbin need, do we need more information from him? Do you need me to open a public hearing?
I think, I think it's time to open the public hearing at this point.
Okay. Not knowing who's in our audience uh this evening, so at this time, we will open the public hearing. Again, this is uh for W L Green Ventures at uh location nine nineteen slash nine twenty-nine North Mitchell. Uh, again, this is to open in one of the buildings uh, medical marijuana retail establishment. So if we have viewers out there this evening, the floor is now open for comments in favor or not in favor. Uh, and I'll sit here and listen and watch for now, so um public hearing at this time is open for any type of comment.
Again, if you need to unmute from a cell phone, it's star six. I am not seeing any activity.
I'm not seeing and or hearing uh anything. Uh, Mr. Wallace, do you think I've given sufficient time? Uh, on comments?
Let's give it another thirty seconds and close it.
Okay.
So, uh, please uh speak in the next thirty seconds if you would like to comment during the uh public hearing. Not seeing anything. I think it's safe to uh to close the public hearing.
At this time, public hearing will be closed. Uh, if there's any questions here uh for Mr. Wallace and or uh, Corbin that has given us information, uh, any board member discussion, floor is open. I have a quick question. Uh, I think on your one plan, I think I skimmed it. The um, I'm gonna call it an alleyway uh to the north of the facility. I think I seen you were gonna pave that.
That's correct. There's currently a sidewalk uh through there, and basically we're just basically replacing, there's a lot, it's pretty broken up at this point. The landscaping throughout the years, the roots have kind of broke things up, and we're just gonna basically bust out that concrete and reap for it.
I did a drive around it, so I had an idea what everything was tonight, so, yeah.
When discussion is done, I do have a proposed motion uh when you think you're ready for that.
So, John, this is Carla, and um I um I like what I'm seeing, and I think that there's some wonderful improvement to that property. And so I would like to understand what that proposed motion would be.
Let me share my screen. Are you able to see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through the slides. It's on three different slides. Uh, the motion would be to approve the special land use permit for the W L Green Ventures Medical Marijuana Retail Store at nine nineteen, nine twenty-nine North Mitchell Street as presented with the following conditions. Um, this was before the bicycle rack was added, so that's in there. Add a bicycle rack near the front entrance. Sub- submit an approval of a photometric lighting plan by the city. Uh, the, the, our city engineer would uh review and approve the photometric plan. Uh, compliance with the city engineer's recommendations as part of the administrative site plan review process, I think in large part. Um, that may have already been done. I'm not sure that they had the time to complete everything that she had recommended, but I just put that in as a catch-all. And again, not anticipating anything, but should any water, sewer, or storm drain infrastructure have to be moved, adjusted, or improved? That it be approved by the city utilities department and the city's consulting engineer. And uh, that there be continued compliance with the city zoning ordinance and ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh two, which is an ordinance to amend section ten dash three of the of chapter ten of the Cadillac City Code, which uh deals specifically with medical marijuana facilities. Um, some of these may never come into, you know, hopefully would never come into play, but if they did, I just wanted to have those conditions uh in in the motion. And that would be it.
John, I have a quick question before uh the mayor does anything. Um, special land use permit goes with the property, but yet they've indicated that only one, the uh nine nineteen location is going to be the retail establishment for the medical marijuana. So I get, my question, I guess, is why are we giving special land use to both buildings? Because it will stay with that.
Thanks, Derek. I guess I'm having my lunch right now.
Whoop, Kevin, you're on audio.
I didn't do too bad. Did a lot better than I thought we were gonna do.
Kevin.
I, I guess the reason why we're including both is because of the site plan.
We can do, how many we do today?
Uh, Miss, Mr. Funt?
No, three sixty.
Mr. Funt, you are audio on.
And we said.
There, I muted him.
Thank you. Sorry.
Well, it's, it's a little tricky. Um, we are approving special land use permit, but we're also approving the site plan. A lot of times, planning commission doesn't approve a site plan unless it's connected to a special land use permit. In this case, we're approving this the site plan for the entire property. Uh, it wouldn't hurt to add to the motion if uh you wanted to limit the uh marijuana piece um to the nine nineteen building and uh uh then apply your full approval to the full site uh as as regards the uh site plan approval. But that would be up, you know, up to the commission, whether you wanted to do that or not.
Uh, Mr. Bowman, what's, what's your thoughts on this?
On, on whether it needs to be more clear or?
Well, uh, my question pertaining to special land use going to both locations. Or should we narrow it down to just the nine nineteen?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know the answer well enough. I apologize.
Okay, no, you're, you're my go-to uh guy in that. Um.
Uh, does the applicant have any concern if marijuana use was limited to the one building?
Uh, I don't believe we have any concern if it's limited to the the one parcel. Um, you know, I, I think ultimately if it works for uh the property, as we all know, sits on one parcel. So if it's limited to the nine one nine address as our current plan states, I don't believe we will have any issues, but just thinking ahead and, you know, in the future for the second building or if this property's ever sold or anything, I don't think uh, one way or the other, it will affect uh, you know, our plans. So we, we'll be happy with your decision either ways, is my comment.
Thank you.
Uh, John, are these two separate tax IDs or are they on one tax ID?
They're currently one.
The uh, when I look at the GIS map, they're showing two parcels. Uh, how they receive their tax bill, I don't know. Um, but I, I, in that the the parcel still exists, we could limit the marijuana piece to, as a term of a use, to the nine nineteen parcel. Um, but then if you were going to do that, you would still want to address the full site plan in terms of the parking and and all the other improvements. Um, that would have to apply to, you would have to carefully carve out that you're just talking about the use on that one parcel, but you were not treating only the one parcel as it relates to the balance of the site plan.
And then additionally, just something I thought of on the fly, uh, you know, talking out loud with the group, but, you know, potentially, uh, if the you know, dispensary is doing very, very well when it is adult use, maybe they're expanding into building two and, you know, combining it. Uh, I'm just, I don't think that's anywhere near our plans, but just talking out loud, or if this, you know, city of Cadillac ends up adult adopting uh, social consumption lounges with the state of Michigan is allowing in many municipalities now. Uh, obviously, we're talking, you know, years down the line, that could potentially play a factor into building number two. So maybe approving the entire parcel as a special land use uh makes sense, but a- again, we're okay either way. I'm just talking out loud to just brainstorm with the group.
So this is Mayor Philkins, and I think that at this time, um, you know, the request was for um the nineteen building. And so if at some point in the future, those plans or that that ask change, then I think it could come ba- back to the planning commission to include the second building. But, but right now, um, I think we should just go ahead with the original uh, the original ask.
Well, essentially, the motion, the motion would be changed uh only to create a limit on the marijuana use limited to the, to the nine uh nineteen parcel. And but the approval as part of the special land use permit uh dealing with the entire site would apply to all the other elements, the the parking, the circulation, the the improvements to the building, so that you'd be essentially approving all that. You would just carve out the limitation on the medical marijuana to that one lot.
And could that be just, could that be handled with just two separate motions? One motion for the special use and one motion for the site plan?
I think it would be one.
I think they're, I think they're tied together, quite frankly. I don't think you can separate them. So, you know, you would, you would be adopting the entire package, adopting the full site plan with uh the uh limitation of the medical marijuana just to the one parcel. Yeah, which would be the nine nineteen parcel. So we could just add one condition. Uh, yeah, we would just add the condition that the uh that the, from a use perspective, that the medical marijuana use would be limited to the nine nineteen parcel.
I would like to go ahead and make that motion at this time.
Second. Bar is yours.
Did I hear a second?
Uh, Mr. Bowman.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, Ms. Abby.
All right. We shall vote. All right. Putman?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Greg? Absent, sorry. Uh, Botcher? Absolut, sorry, uh, Botcher? Is he back up?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, gotcha.
All right, perfect.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Bowman?
Yes.
Wonderful, perfect.
Thank you all.
Pass, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, okay, old business, we have nothing. Uh, board member comments, anyone? Okay, everybody's good, uh, any communications? I'm gonna figure not, Mr. Wallace?
No communications.
Uh, any other public comments this evening pertaining to anything at this stage? Do we even have any public?
Uh, I just have one last question before I.
Sure.
Uh, thank you again for your communication and making this a successful project in the future. And, uh, wh- how long is our approval, uh, w- last in the city? Just so I could start putting together a construction timeline?
Uh, I think you have a year to, uh, you know, launch into the project. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily wait that long, but.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. But if, if, if you hadn't filed for any kind of, uh, if we saw no action or no permits were filed and nothing was happening, uh, after a year, we would probably, uh, void the, uh, special use permit.
Sure, okay, and then you'll be emailing a letter to us showing this?
Yes.
Awesome, you guys have a wonderful night, thank you, everybody.
You too, thank you. Okay. Uh, having no other business, and if nobody cares, we will adjourn.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, Carla.